And so I will call this meeting of the Oconee County Planning Commission to order. We're November seventeenth of two thousand and twenty five. We're a recommending body to the Oconee Board of Commissioners. Decisions made here tonight for rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the B O C for final actions. Tonight's agenda and sign up sheets were out back. Got those up here. If you missed signing up, you can go get my attention later on and have a chance. The way we do things, the Oconee Planning Department staff will present their report and recommendations for each request. We'll ask for public input from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative to go next. Then we'll ask for people that want to speak in favor of that particular request. And between the petitioner's representative and so forth and the positive people, we'd like to keep that to about twenty minutes. I have to keep time up here. Then we'll ask for input against the proposal if there is any. And again, I want to limit that to about twenty minutes, especially tonight. We've got lots of items. Then we'll allow the petitioner, if they still have time or their representative to answer any questions that might be easily clarified or answered. If they have some time remaining and then when all that's done, I will close the public portion of the meeting and bring it up to the commissioners. They will get their answers, our questions answered and from planning staff or the petitioner. And then after we settle in and get most of those dealt with, we'll, I'll be looking for a motion and a second to, and a vote on each of these items. For the benefit of those that might be watching online, we ask that everybody come up to the podium to do their comments. While approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Direct your comments to the planning commission. They're the ones you need to events today, not the audience back there. When we have multiple speakers on the same topic, you are permitted to do a ditto from the previous speaker and then bring up any additional points that you'd like to make. And then we ask the audience to extend courtesy to each other by not applauding or commenting from their seats or any of the speakers. And with that, I'll ask my commissioners, you've had a chance to look at last month's minutes. Again, I apologize for not being here, but as far as I can tell, the typos were all correct. Is there any other corrections that need to be held on here? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All right, I hear Chris, we're one and who would like to say? Kobe spoke first, all right? And all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. And with that, I've already mentioned old business. You guys voted me back in, I appreciate it. And we'll go on to Guy with the first rezon request, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Your first item this evening is rezoned P twenty five zero one nine eight Seundberg LLC applicant and owner. This is parcel A zero seven zero three four A. It's currently zoned A one in the country states character area. And the applicant is requesting rezoning from A one to B two for an auditorium, assembly hall. This is a recorded plat in your application packet. The concept plan in your packet, architectural images. And staff recommends denial of the request as it is not in compliance with the joint comprehensive plan for the town of Bishop. However, should the mayor and council choose to approve the rezoning to be two, staff recommends the following conditions. Our three standard conditions as well as number four. As indicated in section seventeen oh seven dot three, a traffic impact study shall be completed and submitted for review of planning and public works. Prior to application for a site development plan. At the owner's expense, road improvements shall be made to ensure the impacted intersections of the proposed church access drive and highway eighty six. Highway eighty six and Union Church and highway eighty six at four forty one operate at a level of service C or better. Number five, service areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six foot masonry wall with facade materials matching the exterior of principal structures with black painted metal steel enclosure doors. Enclosure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. Number six, the building facade shall have an exterior material consisting of the following. Brick or brick face, natural or manufactured stone, architectural block, artificial stone panels, stucco, stucco finished metal panels, glass, wood siding or fiber cement lap siding. With metal accent materials not to exceed twenty percent of each building face. Use of visible concrete block, painted block, split faced block or poured concrete is specifically prohibited on all exterior walls faces. Where walls are structurally formed of such prohibited material, finished materials, they should be completely finished per the requirements provided above. Number seven, the site is required to direct all exterior lighting away from residential areas and street right of ways. Light structures graded in thirty feet and height shall be reviewed by the planning director. Illumination of any exterior area of a non-residential development, including parking lots, areas under a canopy or roof, walkways and building entrances. Shall be achieved using only full cutoff fixtures. Lighting templates shall show one foot candle or less the property line, except where the adjoining properties, commercial, industrial. Parking areas shall be properly illuminated for the safety of pedestrians and vehicles and for policing with a minimum elimination of one foot candle. For all portions of the parking space. Number eight, there should be no stormwater ponds across property lines as the proposed pond is for a use that is not allowed in the A one zoning district. And would violate Bishop's section four oh five. Only one principal building or use on a lot. Proposed pond for this use cannot be on the adjacent parcel A zero seven zero three four. Number nine, a cross access easement shall be recorded prior to site development plans submitted. Submental to allow the proposed shared driveway connection with parcel A zero seven zero three four. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
How could we do the site plan? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering, ten fifty Barber Creek Drive, building four hundred Lockensville. We're representing the owner this evening on the proposed rezon and variance requests. The property was annexed into the town of Bishop back in two thousand and twenty one and is currently zoned A one. We've been working with the owner over the past couple of months. Our recommendation to them was to look at a comprehensive plan for the development that worked with that Saint Allred Church and their overall campus master plan. You guys saw that last month. Now, the plan before you this evening is what came out of those efforts. The owner is proposing a forty five hundred square foot events space or assembly hall with parking. There we go. So the event space is here, parking there, outdoor kind of long grass area here. As you can see, we're proposing a shared drive. The church that was approved is here, so we're trying to share that drive to come out at Dollar General. And we're also proposing a shared stormwater management facility here, which is at the lowest elevation of the drainage basin right there. And we've also been working with a soil scientist to ensure that the site can accommodate the proposed development. And we do feel this project is a good project for Bishop. Planning staff did recommend denial, so I want to bring to your attention a couple of items. First, the project is located along highway one eighty six. And it's really at a commercial node. I mean, there's, you know, you have Dollar General here. Golden Pantry is here and then the church that was recently approved here. So that's kind of a commercial node right there at those two highway intersections. Second, then the staff report mentions twice about increased traffic and generated noise. It's stated in the report, the I T E manual does not have a category specifically for assembly hall or auditorium. The closest comparative category in the manual is for a small office. And that category only generates about sixty five average daily trips. And this is not a substantial increase, especially when it's not anticipated that the facility will be used on a day by day basis. Also, this is a venue that is to be used primarily inside, so I'm not sure where the increased noise would come from. Third, before this project was annexed into the town of Bishop, it was on A G in the county. If it had not been annexed, that event space would have been allowed as a special use. So this is a matrix in the U D C and for event space, it is a special use in that ag district. So it would not have required a zoning modification at all. Unfortunately, the town of Bishop's code is not comprehensive and it does not cover all the possible uses. The nearest comparable use is an assembly hall auditorium, which is only allowed in a B two district. I do want to take a minute to address a couple of the conditions. On the rezon conditions, number five is specifically addressed in the town of Bishop's ordinance. The condition as proposed, it really exceeds the requirements of the town's ordinance. Number six is not addressed in the town's ordinance. The condition as proposed does not meet the architecture that the owner has proposed for the site. So that's really a U D C requirement being applied to Bishop. Number seven is reasonable, we're okay with that. However, I do have a problem with number eight. As previously stated, we're proposing that that shared use stormwater be at the lowest point of this basin. Right now, there's a tremendous amount of water that comes, there's a big hay field, cotton field that's across four forty one. That water comes across four forty one between the Dollar General and the Saint Allred Church. And there's a pond here, so that water comes here, goes under a culvert and then dumps out and flows right through here. So to accommodate, that's a tremendous amount of water, sixty acres of water that's draining through here. So we don't want to take that on and put it in a pond at all. I know when we, when we initially looked at the Saint Allred Church, that pond, we had a pond sitting here, but we cannot make it work because of this drainage. You can't get back around to accommodate it. So that's why we're proposing doing shared drainage on this side, crossing this, this storm pipe with, you know, basically let it sheet flow to here, discharge it, and we'll do shared detention. So you can't have both. You can't have a shared access drive with detention on either parcel and make it work. It's not possible. The most feasible way is to have that access in a shared pond. Stormwater is not a utility, it is a utility, it is not a use. Therefore, there are shared utilities all over the county. We see them, shared ponds, shared, you know, sanitary easements, things like that. So that's a utility and not a use. I'll go ahead and speak to the variance a little bit, well, I'll wait, I'll come back. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The owner is here, if you have any questions for her as far as process or anything about the facility, thank you.
Thank you. So on the sign up sheet, I have a Brian Smith that wants to speak.
Good evening. My name is Brian Smith. I live at one zero zero two Townside Lake Court. I wish we had a map up there where I could show you where I live. But my, I live in Townside, you know, subdivision lot. My property backs up to Cemetery Road and then that, the other side of that is Bishop Cemetery. Long story short, the ten acres, do y'all have a copy of the, like the application with the map and stuff? Well, the, like the ten point seven acres to the west is owned by my parents, which I'm going to say tonight I own, but basically they bought it for my benefit that I'll get in a few years. Long story short, the whole site, the temple, our, my parents' ten point seven acres, the applicants, the churches and the Dollar General. We tried to purchase part of all this property prior to Dollar General. Long story short, living in the subdivision, I back up to all this and I, you know, I'm trying, I'm trying to preserve my backyard and control what's behind me. So, long story short, I tried for a while to buy the property, gave up. My dad tried to buy the property. Eventually Dollar General got in contact with him and we bought the ten point seven acres just prior to the church and the applicant tonight. But we bought it to have a buffer, but also we bought it because my daughter, who's now sixteen, we can't get on, out on four forty one and she's driving. So we, we do, we do have a driveway permit on Cemetery Road and a postal address on Cemetery Road. And we use that to park a car, like she goes to school late because she's enjoying enrollment now. But I used to pull the car around every morning for her to park there, you know, so she didn't have to get out on the mess on four forty one, which is total government failure that we can't come up with a solution. Long story short, I've always been concerned and if you kept up with the church and Bishop and all that, I was really involved with that because I would like to have a say in what's developed behind me. Because if you look on the Dollar General was approved, the land use map did have it as country estates, the whole thirty two acres. Well, if you look at the drive going into Dollar General and even the mayor, the prior mayor said future commercial. So that where the church is, that we just got the special use permit, that was planned to be commercial. So I jumped on when the church came in and was all in favor because like, oh, that's a good use, that's a nice buffer. I don't want commercial lights, blah, blah. I'll eventually get to this, but long story short, Daniella didn't even know I was coming tonight, but I'm in, I'm in favor of it because probably a year and a half ago, Daniella called me with the idea of this, what she wants to do here. But I kind of view this as an extension of the church. She's building a building that the church and she, they can correct me if I'm wrong, that the church can utilize, but also bring in a little bit of revenue. So the way I look at it is the, you know, if the church owned this property, this whole development right here would be fine. It would have passed on as special use. So then I saw the staff's opinion and I kind of, my immediate reaction was like, I hope this is denied because I, and I misread it. Because it said lights over thirty feet, blah, blah. Anyways, what I would like to see, it doesn't bother me as long as there's adequate buffer. And I talked to Daniel prior to it and she said, yeah, you know, we also want to shield from seeing what's on your property. So with that in mind, I'm comfortable with this coming in. And look at, and I tried to do a little research and you have, and the engineer said before, if this was in the county, it could be a special use. Hayden Estates, it's not B two, it's agricultural. So it's kind of a loophole between this messed up between, you know, town ordinances and county ordinances. So on one, it's okay, you know, if she come in five years ago, this would have been approved. So what I'm getting at, I'm fine with it as long as there's a buffer and I don't, I don't see it as a bad thing. Yeah, it'd be too scares me, but in the recommendations, it said only be, you know, approved as an event facility. So if she vacates and somebody comes in and says, I want to use, you know, use car lot, it's not going to happen. So, well, long story short, we're right next to it. Fine with it if the buffers are adequate. You know, I don't want buffers that meet minimums, but there are buffers that are effective. So with that, thanks.
Thank you. So I don't have anybody else signed up. But having heard those two, we're still in the speaking in favor. Does anybody want to add anything in favor of this question? All right, now I'll ask if there's anyone that wants to speak in opposition. You didn't sign up, but you have a chance, all right? Nobody's trying to get my attention, so I'll close the public comment section and go ahead and bring it up to the commissioner for their questions. Who wants to go first? Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Mr. Greer?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, would you clarify for me? I'm unsure about the relationship between the auditorium and the church. Is, these are two separate entities, the auditorium is separate from the church?
One hundred percent, yes, sir.
And is the audit, is there some contemplation that the church would use the auditorium?
No, not, not at this time. So originally the church, originally we thought that we may could get this done prior to the church finding a new location when they got, their lease was not renewed in Bishop. Timing didn't work out for that, so no, there's no connection between the two at all. Daniella is going to have her own facility. I mean, the church is going to have their own facility, so.
So this auditorium is like a.
This is.
Event type thing?
Yes.
Expected to be a gym or a business of some sort like.
No, sir. No, it's for, you know, meetings, weddings. Yeah, I just attended the one in Lockinsville, had a celebration of life, life for Mr. John Smith, so stuff like that, similar.
So is this like a gymnasium type building or is it a?
No.
More like a.
Just an open facility. Have you ever been to like Antique Acres up on Snowsmill Road?
Okay.
Very similar to that. So size wise too, since you mentioned it, so comparable size, that building at Antique Acres is fifty by eighty. So it's four thousand square foot, there are two of those. So this will just be forty five hundred, just a little larger, open and, you know, inside like that for tables and chairs to be put out. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
I got a question.
So point to me, tell me where the line is, it's over the line.
Give me some more.
I believe this is the property line. This portion.
So that'll be a piece of underground pipe?
But you'll need to ask the engineer on that.
Okay. So the flat line is the line between where the church is and the proposed facility. That driveway right there is coming out the backside of Dollar General?
That's right, yes, sir. They're proposing this shared drive.
Yeah, now I got a question.
So to answer your question about the pond, so.
Help me understand what's going on here.
So. So right now, so this is the church's property.
All right, that's the guy right there. I mean, I'm not familiar with.
So six, probably fourteen acres.
Yeah, and the building of the church in the front of.
Will sit, the church will sit here.
In the back of that, behind that driveway.
Correct. And then there, this is extended into their parking lot. Here.
So everybody's coming beside the Dollar General to get to the church and.
Yes, correct.
So this thing doesn't have out on the four forty one at all?
Not currently. So on the, on the church's plan, what we had was this, at, at a future phase, this drive would be extended and then a deceler lane provided here. So.
This applicant or the church?
The church, correct. So, and so to understand the history of this property, so Daniella, the lady who is doing this development here this evening, she owned all this, all the property. So she sold the church their property.
I remember when I was searching, her husband.
Okay, well then that was divided, the church bought this and, and so what she can't do, she's trying to accommodate the church in the future to do a drive and access here. What you can't do is you can't say, you can't come in here and put a driveway and do one here, you won't meet G dot separation.
Too close together.
Too close together. So we, what we tried to do is try to do this shared for now and when the church punches through at a future phase and it, then that access would ultimately, it'll end up being here. That's just down the road.
All right, so the underground pipe that shows on the dotted line.
Correct, so.
Is this all ready?
No, so what, so right now, there's, so right now, the Dollar General has a pond that sits here. There's drainage in a ditch that runs through here. The pond dumps out into that ditch and then it both comes under this driveway and dumps out with a head wall somewhere right in here. So the natural drainage flow is just right, is doing this.
What's the church going to do?
So that, so to do, so what the church will do is they'll tie into this system here and then dump into this shared pond. But the way the condition reads is that the church can't have their stormwater on this piece of property at all.
Probably has a mutual agreement that is, that they're going to do.
That will be in place. Correct. But, and here's, and here's why, and I, and I'll tell you why. And, and I don't agree with the way the code is being interpreted. The code, Bishop's code has a specific section that says only one principal building or use on a lot. Only one principal building, structure or use and its customary accessory buildings and uses shall be permitted on any lot. I don't see stormwater as a, as a use, it's a utility, always.
So the park is hanging over, is in question?
Yeah, it's just slope, yeah, that pond.
It'll be, it'll be the.
Yeah, but you couldn't, and that's not the point. The point is I can't do stormwater on this piece for this church regardless. I had to do another pond based on that condition, I can't do that.
Justin, I got a question for you and then Guy might have to.
Okay.
Why don't we just put a drainage, allow the church?
We can, and that's what this dotted line is. So that dotted line is, this is a drainage easement that's basically catching, will catch this parking lot, all this drainage coming here. It'll get into this pipe system and dump in that pond. The condition says I can't do that. I can't do stormwater for this, for the church on this parcel. And I don't, I don't think that's the way the code is worded. That's why I'm asking you to remove it.
Any other questions? Matt, a lot of these codes are written because the government doesn't want to be in the, between these two adjoining properties, sort out details in the future, but.
Discussion thing?
We're still in discussion thing.
Government don't ever maintain, in my opinion, the government has no possibility to maintain that.
It would be private ownership and private operation, yeah.
So still be a private, it'll be a private pond the day they put it in, it'll be a private pond the day the world comes. And I still have it back. So it'll, it'll still be a private pond and if both owners agree to keep the pond like it's supposed to be, so the county has authority to come in there and tell you, your pond don't meet some kind of code that they got, you got to fix. So now both owners have to fix it instead of just one, so. I don't personally have a problem with the two landowners saying, yeah, we're going to set up here as a pond like it's supposed to be. Somebody else has different, they don't follow that, whatever they hear.
Any other questions we need to address? I guess before I start looking for a motion, I will need to know. will need to know if I'm the person making the motion. Do you want to accept all of the conditions as recommended, or you'll have to give me a motion that. Is it number eight?
Yeah.
Or in my notes. Yeah, according to my notes, he had issue with three conditions. You want to ask Mr. Greer to address the others that he had? Number eight was his most. Only number eight. So I have a motion to. All right, so Matt has made a motion to approve. It was, it was approved, right? To approve with conditions one through seven and condition nine. Do I have a second? Need a second to move Matt's motion? Or once? Okay, Kobe is going to join that. Now, any further discussion before we? All right, so now I'm going to ask for a vote by right hand. If you approve of this request, given the county's conditions except for condition eight, which we have struck. All in favor, raise your right hand. And therefore, I'll ask for opposition, please raise your right. Or, and then it looks like one apps. Oh, okay, sorry. I did. All right, so three to four, that motion has failed. Let me ask if there is another motion. It'll be to approve and leave out more conditions, or it can be to deny. Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend that we. Jim is deny. And if it got past us, you want to leave all of the nine conditions, or do you want to?
Well, I would agree with the idea of scratching number eight.
See, the Board of Commission is still going to take some of our advice, so if you send it up as a deny, you still.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's not correct.
Not necessary?
Yes, sir.
And all that. So who would like to second Jim's denial request? Do I have a first and a second, and now I'll ask the vote by right hand, who deny the request? Three. Got three. And those. So four. And then I'll ask those that do not want to deny or do not want to vote in favor of this denial. That passes four to three, and we'll send that up as a denial to the Board of Commission.
City Council. City Council.
Oh, city council in this case, I'm sorry. Get rusty without that. All right, so do we deal with the variance? We'll pass on the variance, go to the next number two hundred.
Okay.
You may hear the variance.
Okay. So do you make a presentation?
Yes.
And we'll hear the variance quest. Make another vote on them.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, again, this is variance P twenty five zero one nine nine C Underberg LLC applicant owner. Again, this is parcel A zero seven zero three four A. It's currently zoned A one, country, state, character area. The variance request from the Bishop zoning ordinance, section six oh five, to reduce the required buffer from fifteen feet to zero feet along the eastern property line. The recorded plat in your application packet, the concept plan. And staff recommends approval should the concurrent rezoning is approved. With the following conditions, there shall be a partial reduction of the buffer allowed in the area of the drive aisle connecting to parcel A zero seven zero three four. Landscape buffer shall be installed to screen the parking lot and stormwater pond. Number two, development design and structure shall meet or exceed the standards indicated on the concept plan narrative representative architectural sketches and other documents submitted with conditional use application. With the variance application attached here too, this condition shall not construe approval of any standard that is not in conformity with the Bishop's owning regulations or subdivision ordinance. Number three, the building facade shall have an exterior material consisting of the following, brick or brick face, natural or manufactured stone, architectural block, artificial stone panels, stucco, stucco finished metal panels, glass, wood siding or fiber cement lap siding with metal accent materials, not to exceed twenty percent of each building face. Use of visible concrete block, painted block, split face block, or poured concrete is specifically prohibited on all exterior wall surfaces or faces. Where walls are structurally formed of such prohibited finished materials, they must be completely finished per the requirements provided above. Number four, the stormwater pond shall not be within the fifteen foot buffer. Number five, existing trees may serve as the buffer if after site inspection, the areas meet the requirements of section six oh five. If the requirements are not met, supplemental evergreen trees shall be planted at a planting height of six feet. Thank you.
All right, Justin, you're the only one signed up on this one.
So the variance is necessary to provide shared access as well as the pond. We can't do those with the buffers in place. And if you look at page four of the staff report number five, it specifically says recent development approvals are for institutional uses that maintain the A one district. So this is specifically in reference to the church. So staff is recognizing that the church is in institutional use. There's no, really no need for a buffer between a commercial and institutional use. Light of that, I'd ask that you remove all the conditions of the variance. Thank you very much.
All right. As I said, Justin was the only one who signed up. Is there anyone else that wants to comment on this? All right, nobody's reaching for the mic. So then I'll ask, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Again, if you're watching on TV, nobody's reaching for the mic. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring it up here to commissioners to get their questions addressed.
Justin, just to clarify, the only two items that would be in that buffer
Well, there's a little bit of this from stormpipe and a structure.
Well, no light building.
Oh, no building. No, sir. No.
All right. Anybody else? Which we didn't prove the project next door, but I guess this would address another project that might come forward, or we had the first stuff at the the city council. And given what advice we can provide.
I don't like a motion.
Great. Obie's going to make a motion to do.
Approve by strike number four.
Move.
With conditions one.
Three and five.
Somebody want a second? Obie's.
I would.
Matt? Right. So we have a conditioned, our, a motion to approve. Striking condition number four and leaving this is one through three and number five. All in favor, please raise your right hand. This. And, okay, and opposed. Okay, that one is passed, and we will send that on for the council for the city commission. All right, now we'll go on to number two hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Again, this is P twenty five zero two zero zero Wallace and Lauren Miller applicant and owner. This is C zero six A zero two two. Currently zoned AR three in the agricultural preservation character area. And the request is to change the condition of the previous zoning case at three nine zero three to modify the condition, the following condition, modify condition number four to revise, remove the rear platted buffer that had a radius of four hundred feet from active poultry houses. This is the recorded plat in your application packet, slightly the larger version showing the, the buffer that was set aside for the adjacent poultry houses. These are the current pictures of the adjacent poultry houses. As you can see, they are no longer in use. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition, number two, condition number four, the rezone three nine oh three is revised as follows. The seventy five foot wide building setback line shall be platted on all exterior boundaries of the subdivision. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will ask the commissioners representative board of the.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mark Campbell, Carter Engineering, ten ten Commerce Drive, Bogart, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of Wallace Miller and his wife Lauren. He's also known as Commander Wallace Miller of the Navy. He's a naval aviator currently serving in Maryland at the Naval Academy. He's a Georgia native and is looking to build a home in Bridle Gate subdivision. So as a civil engineer tonight, I'm here to talk about chicken houses. Don't get to do that very often. There were definitely chickens in the adjacent chicken houses in two thousand and one. That is not in dispute. So when this Bridle Gate subdivision was platted, there were chickens in the chicken houses. That was owned by Mr. Vernon Torrance. Sadly, Vernon passed away in two thousand and fourteen. And based on communication with his daughter Marie, he got rid of those chickens in two thousand and thirteen approximately prior to his passing. So there haven't been chickens in the chicken houses in the last year, haven't been chicken in chicken houses for the last decade. So that's kind of common knowledge for folks along Ashendale Road in the southern part of O'Conne County, but it's not necessarily public knowledge as concerning the plat. So the best part of that particular parcel, which is about four and a half acres in that Bridle Gate subdivision, from a topography standpoint, from a soil standpoint, is kind of right in that area where the, the platted setback exists. So working with staff, going through the process, again, I'm not a poultry scientist, but the good thing about being located near the University of Georgia with a great poultry science program is there's plenty of folks that hold PhDs that do in poultry science that are able to go by and say, hey, obviously, I didn't take those pictures. They the one, a PhD with poultry science took those and said it's not viable for, for poultry in those houses. And obviously, there haven't been any there in quite some period of time. Happy to talk more about the project, happy to talk more about the property of the applicant, but I know y'all got a lot on y'all's agenda tonight, so feel free to ask many questions.
All right, thank you. I have a Miss Borders.
Hey there, I am Alicia Borders. I live on ten fifty seven Ashford Road, and I am the real estate agent that sold them this piece of land. And one of the biggest things was they really wanted to make sure that they had enough usable acreage on that parcel. And with those setback lines, they're just really hoping that they can have them pushed back a little since the chicken houses are no longer active. And that's why I'm here. I support it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I don't have anybody else signed up on that one. Anybody else? Nobody's getting my attention, and I don't have anyone signed up in opposition. Going once, all right, nobody chooses to speak, so I will close the public comment section and bring it up to the commissioner.
Yeah. All of this condition, city on the part of, got the body. That is forty foot, building setback.
Right.
We need to include that in our.
No, that's inside that seventy five. So there's our, there's also a seventy five that's there. That's part of their covenants. So that's part of the condition as well. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. That's right.
There's supposed to be a bridle path all around that. Built it yet, though. Guy, I have one question for you. Since this is my neighborhood and people have bought out other chicken, derelict chicken properties and then refurbished them, but I looked this one over. I don't imagine anybody's going to come and build a chicken house, but if they did, they would then have to keep the distance themselves.
That's correct. They would, they would have to meet the current code.
So with the letter that the, these people have received saying there's no chicken by current owners. If anybody bought that property, even though it had chicken houses in the past, they would have to.
That's right. The use, the use is ceased. That's right.
Anybody else? All right. We have no more than approved with condition. All right, so Nathan is making a motion to approve with condition. Just seconds. And all in favor? Please raise your right. An animus crowd, thank you. That one will be passed up to the Board of Commissioners as approved. All right, number two oh five, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This is rezone P twenty five zero two zero five, O'Conne Office Partners LLC applicant and owner. These are the parcels in your application packet. Currently zoned OBP in the regional center character area. And they're requesting simply modify the condition of the existing rezone P twenty one zero one zero eight to allow an increase in the total allowed building area from eighty six thousand square feet to one hundred and five thousand square feet. This is a recorded plat in your application packet, the concept plan showing the proposed buildings. Representative architecture. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, all building facade materials shall be brick, stone, or glass as shown in the first and third representative architectural images submitted in the narrative of the application. No metal siding shall be permitted on any building in the development. Number five, at the time of development of each lot, sidewalks shall be extended from the proposed private road to connect with sidewalks around each building. Number six, all lots within development shall only have vehicular access to the proposed interior street except for any required fire or emergency access road. Number seven, the total building area for all lots shall not exceed one hundred and five thousand square feet. Number eight, the private sewer collection system connection to a public system manhole shall be certified complete by Water Resources Priority Issuance of a CO for any building. Number nine, the development shall be limited to the previously approved eighty six thousand square feet of building area until a second entrance is constructed to meet the requirements for two fire apparatus access roads unless all buildings are equipped throughout with approved automatic sprinkler systems. Number ten, any proposed emergency access to VIN drive of private roads shall require revised final plat to remove the no access easement and provide an emergency access ingress easement from the property to VIN drive right away at the owner's expense. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kevin Price, you're the only one that's signed up for this one.
I'm Kevin Price. I'm the owner, developer, and general contractor for this project. Just to sort of clarify, one of the things that's in our package, when this property was originally rezoned and divided into the nine lots, the eighty six thousand square foot max came from, at that time, we had it set up to be on septic systems. As we moved forward, we were able to negotiate with the county and to develop a private sewer system to tie into the county system. It'll always be private, but we, we now have gravity sewer. With that investment and the ability to service more square footage, that's where we came with the hundred and five thousand square feet. We really didn't see this coming with the comments that were given to us originally recently, like last week, that, that we got them where they began, they, the reviewer for the county put some restrictions on this. We've since had discussions and have worked through it. Can you put my site plan back up there? Hey, I brought my own laser. So as we've talked through the situation to create a second entrance, I mean, obviously, there's the main entrance, but through the back of this, there's the ability to put an access out on VIN drive right there. We're good with doing that, and that'll get us that second access point. It'll be for emergency access only. And it'll be designed such that it will handle a seventy five thousand pound fire truck. And it'll be, it, it, it won't be in and out automobile traffic, but it's there. And it'll be, it, it, it won't be in and out automobile traffic, but it's there, excuse me, in the, in the case of an emergency. And I do understand, and I would, I would hope that when this, when phase one was approved at the eighty-six thousand, right now with, there are four buildings, we're waiting on a permit on the fourth, but the four buildings that are out there comprise roughly forty-two or three thousand feet, so roughly half of our original eighty-six thousand. There is a, a local Athens company that's coming in on lot five, which is that, and they're talking about about twelve thousand feet. What I'm getting at there is we would fast approach maxing out at the eighty-six, but then again, there may be a situation where someone comes and doesn't need ten or twelve thousand square feet, but we want the, the ability to, to deal with that. But it's my understanding that if this is approved, that we would, we would be allowed to continue to build until we hit the eighty-six thousand. And if we did, then we would go and put that access. So we're prepared to do that. We don't see a problem with it. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, again, up here on the sign up sheet, I don't have anybody else wants to speak in favor, but having heard the, okay, I don't have anybody signed up for opposition either, but if you want to get my attention. Okay, so nobody has reached for the mic once again, and I will go ahead and close the public comment and bring it up to the commissioners.
Yeah, I've got a question for you. There's a, there's a, along VIN drive and also on Jimmy Dangle.
Right, yes, sir.
How are they getting around?
This can, this condition would supersede that, it would change that one, they'd have to do a, that's right, they'll have to change that, yes, sir.
So if I had a motion to approve, should I leave off?
No, sir.
Are any other questions you need to sort out before I can get them moved?
For the emergency, will that have aid on it?
We'll work through that with the, the applicant during construction.
Right. Anybody else? Was that James? All right. Matt and James say approve with all the conditions. Please raise your right hand if you agree with that. unanimous, that is approved with conditions. And we'll be sent up to the board of commissioners. So that brings us to application two oh nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezone P twenty-five zero two zero nine, Meredith L. Chapman, Ronald T. Chapman, applicant and owner. This is parcel B zero nine zero two six A. Currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation character area. And the reason, the request is a reason on six acre property from AG to AR three. This is a recorded plat in your application packet, the concept plan showing the two, three acre lots, architectural image that was submitted with the application. Staff recommends denial as it does not comply with the joint comprehensive plan. However, if the board chooses to approve the rezoning, staff recommends our one standard condition. Thank you.
All right, is the applicant or the applicant seized it here?
I'm Tyler Chapman, I live on eighteen ten Elder Mill Road. Y'all have to forgive me, I'm not used to having to do anything like this, so this is all new to me. I'm here because basically all we're trying to do here is I'm trying to get this rezoned so I can give my daughter three acres to be able to build a house on. That's, that's really the whole intent here. I'm getting nothing out of this, it's not anything that I'm trying to get any kind of gain for doing anything or selling anything. And I would go ahead and disagree with the denial that's in there. I think if you look at the current property, it's in, in alignment with what's in the area already. I have adjacent property, fifty something acres, it's already zoned AR three to, to this property, and we're just asking to, to rezone it to that existing so we can divide it up. I will have three, and my daughter would have three acres. You know, I don't know what else to really say. If you look at the staff analysis that I got back from, for any of the input that came from the planning commission, I think everything pretty much lines up. The only thing that I see that there was any disagreement with is it doesn't line up with a comprehensive plan from two thousand and twenty-three for the county or whatever to continue to keep that rule, which I still think that would still stay in the rural area of it. But, you know, I bought this land twenty-eight years ago. I had no idea that I would not be able to pass it down to my daughter or children, you know. Been, I've been in the county for forty-eight years, my wife's been in the county for her whole life, fifty-eight years. She was raised right down the road from where we live. My parents live in Watkinsville, and like I said, we're just trying to provide a reasonable way for my daughter to be able to afford to still stay in the county. You know, they're looking at building a four hundred and fifty half million dollar house on the property, which I think stays in line with everything else going on in the county. So I really don't understand or see why it should be denied. I think it falls in line. I mean, we, we, we love O'Conne County, we've been here, like I said, most of our life, and we're trying to pass that down to our, our family, so. I don't know what else to say, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of the other.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and we'll call you back up if we have more questions. All right, so I don't have anybody else listed to speak in favor, but I'll ask. And I don't have anybody reaching for the mic, so I will close the, the favor portion, but Mr. Chapman, you may have a chance to come back up. But I do have two signed up that want to speak in opposition, Bill Byrd, Beard. Okay.
Ma'am, gentlemen, I'll be brief. My name is Bill Beard, I live at twenty-two ninety Elder Mill Road. I just thought that part of the county always, I have acreage and have another parcel, the ten acres I live on and another parcel as well. I always thought that part of the county was a five acre minimum, and it just seems like this would be Pandora's box if we start splitting a six acre into two threes, and most of the parcels out there are larger than five and ten acres. So I'm, I'm worried about the, the direction that would go along that area and part of the county by taking a six acre parcel and taking it into the two threes. And the next thing you know, if somebody has five, they want to split it into two and a half, which I have a five acre parcel that I don't want to split, but, so I would worry about the, the movement forward of that in the comprehensive plan of the county and the, 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 the trend that would set with that decision, so I would hope you would not approve that.
Thank you, sir. And I have a Mark Costello.
I'm Mark Costello, and I live in Clark County, but I own eighteen hundred Elder Mill Road, which is adjacent to and part of the plat. Guy, could you put that plat up there for me? I think it's page three of yours. So I own the two parcels that are behind the six acres. This was split off, I think, in ninety-seven. And so you had the six, and then you've got a twelve acre that's kind of, I call it a keyhole lot. It goes around that ten acre lot where the house is. That twelve acre lot, the only buildable portion of that is where it says twelve point, excuse me, oh two seven. I had it perked, and it, you can put a house on that, on the top, but it quickly drops off toward the house, and that fifty, roughly fifty acre strip, I, I would assume that that was done originally to keep it in the CUVA program so that you would have a ten and a twelve to, to maintain CUVA. But in order to access the back portion, you have to climb down a ditch and through a creek, up a hill, and then through Rose Creek again, a little Rose Creek, excuse me, to get to the back portion. So it's really not usable. When I went to buy this nearly, I guess it's been two years ago, I spoke with Mr. Herring because my concern was what do I do with these strange shaped lots? I mean, there's really nothing great saleable about that twelve acres because you really can't access it unless you use foot traffic to go through there. So my, it, it's in CUVA, so it would be a hefty breach for me to reconfigure this, but in speaking with Guy, he said, yeah, you could probably drop the, the twelve down to five or six acres, obviously, five would be allowable. And then I would be able to leave the existing house with the remaining acreage and clean that up. In two years of ownership, I have kind of fallen in love with that track. It's absolutely beautiful, Little Rose Creek is beautiful, it's all hardwood, it's just a beautiful piece of property, and I personally think it needs to be sold as a whole, and that would be my intention would be to, to, if I ever sold it, to sell it as one track. However, I have two tracks, and the access currently is to basically sixty foot strip flag lots, if you will, that come in and go past the Chapman's house or eighteen ten, and then you have two driveways there. Currently, you have two culvert pipes, but only one access driveway that goes to the house. In their proposal, it seems they want to add another driveway there. I think you would end up with four driveways in a row. And the, and the, the, the other thing that I would say is if I choose to put a house or sell that lot, I think it's kind of a fight to see who gets their septic and well system in first, because you're going to end up driving by Mr. Chapman's current house, their new proposed house, to get to the third house, and then on the way there, you're going to get to the fourth, the fourth house in a row. To me, it doesn't fit the area, there's a lot of larger properties there, and even the Hard Degree property that's zoned, I believe, AG three is three larger tracks currently. There's not many smaller tracks there. I've spoken with Mr. and Mrs. Lancaster, who joined us on the other side, and they're in agreeance. I sent an email over to the planning commission earlier today to that effect. I just, you know, that, that, like I said, that, that twelve oh two seven spot is the only spot, if you look at the topo, and I have a couple if you want them, I, I don't think I have enough for everybody, but I've got four, and the topo just shows you that it, it drops off pretty. To that, and then there's the other creek there. So, and you can see in that, that I just gave you, it shows their level one soil survey, which puts us right together as if we were in a subdivision. I mean, you know, I don't necessarily want to put a well in with his septic system draining above my well, and I don't know how that would work and where positioning wells and septic tanks would be. But I, I will, I'll close with this in that I, you know, it, it was a key factor to me in purchasing that property, that it would, you know, I could maneuver the lines, number one, but number two, that they're larger tracks. I mean, to drive by two other houses to get to my, you know, of my house there would be, we'd kind of just take away from the area. It wouldn't be going in a rural direction, I would have to pass three houses, and I could stand in my driveway and talk to my neighbor, which is not my desire in that area. So I think I got everything about that. The only other thing is that the proposed driveway would come right by their well and would require a maintenance easement, and it would cause, like I said, three long strip driveways in a row, which would not be really appealing. I would have already, you know, maneuvered the lines around on that property because I, I really don't understand why it was allowed to be done that way. But I think it would cost me about fifty thousand dollars to do so in breaking the, in the CUVA. So again, I'd rather sell it as a whole. If somebody pays me, I might, would consider it, but I feel like, you know, it should stay the way it is. And I, and I, again, it, it would reduce the value of, of my property to have to pass two more houses to get to, to the problem, my structures and stuff on my property. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. And by the way, if anybody didn't know, CUVA is the conservation use. So that is all I have on my list. I'll ask one more time, is there anybody who wants to speak in opposition at this point? I will go ahead and close it, we'll ask. You can be invited up, or you can just answer our questions. So I, I guess there is time, I'll give you one more chance if you want to address any of his, these two oppositions real quick.
I understand some of the concerns there, I understand that they're wanting to keep the rural area. I moved there twenty-eight years ago because it's rural area. I, I, I understand that, we want to continue that, but I don't see how us adding one more house on three acres behind there, that when you drive by, you're only going to see a little driveway going into it, it's not going to deter from others. And he's already got two driveways going into his property that he says are unnecessary, but it's obvious he needs those to be able to develop them the way he wants to. We're not trying to develop anything here, we're trying to just, I'm just trying to pass land down to my family members. I mean, he bought the property, I should have brought, I'll be honest, I should have bought the property when it was on the market two years. I just retired, I did not want to take on extra debt in retirement just to get extra property there, I didn't know it was going to be needed in the beginning. But to sit here and talk about that, that's a little frustrating to me that obviously he's wanting to develop that and get property.
I don't, I have no intention of developing, I'm just having an intention of using it the way it is.
It is, well, that's fine, but the way it is, well.
This is still going to have to go to the board of commissioners, so I'm going to cut it off here as far as our decision.
There are other areas right down the road, within a half a mile from us, that have already been rezoned in the last five, ten years to AR, which are two acre lots in different areas right along that area. So I don't think there again, that I'm asking for anything that's out of reason for the general area.
All right, so we have enough information for now, and we'll.
I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much. All right, I bring it, I close the public comment section, I will bring it up here to the commissioners for your questions of either the staff or petitioner.
I know how the audio is well set, and I have a house I just bought remodeled out of Alba Tote, which is a hundred, yeah, a hundred and one feet, you're inclined, it's a hundred feet. So you are dealing with a lot of footage dealing with.
Because it's a, it's a radius of a hundred.
Yeah, so I got a well on a set of time on one four three.
Right. And then in reality, if it's raining downhill, you would probably want to go a little more than the one hundred.
Well, a hundred and one feet is fine. Yeah. That's all I got.
And I guess since this is my neighborhood, I'll also say that that AR three that's next door was a spot zone way, way, way back in like seventies. It was on the market for twenty years and never got a buyer. Okay, it was before my time. Yeah, I got here in two thousand and nine, so I, I'll say it was before my time, but I've been in that, living in that area for twenty-five years myself, and it was marketing. And it was marketing back then, so I don't know. Anyway, those are just a couple of comments like Matt's. This area is been developed quite a lot since I moved out there and, and yet it's mainly large parcels, all I have to say. Anybody else? I don't get to vote, so it. Now, you might recall there was twenty or thirty that showed the first day and then it just dwindled.
A lot of times when a man needs to give something to his children, gets into a situation. Twenty people came to the top forty. And I'd say ninety-eight percent of those forty thousand live on the dotted land down here.
All right. Will we still have a lot of questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you. In AR three, what, oh, someone were to come in and do it with AR three. Is there a max number of lot, or they max out at five lots, twenty lots?
In agricultural preservation, they could not do a major subdivision. More than five.
They could do. They could do a five lot, three, three acre, five, five, three acre lot in acrehood.
No, not with the comprehensive plan as it is today. Because it's ag preservation, so the minimum lot size is five acres. If you did this AR three, it would, it would be contrary to the comprehensive plan.
I move we approve.
Chris, they approve with conditions, I assume? Can I get a second? So we have a motion to approve the request. To subdivide that parcel off. Matt and Chris, now I need them both right, right handed. So that is approved. We'll go to the board of commissioners as an approval and take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Your next case is rezoned P twenty-five zero-two-one-zero Scott Allen Chambers, applicant and owner. This is parcel A zero-six zero-one-one-C. Currently zoned A one and B one in rural places. The request is a rezon, the seven point five-three-four acre property from A one and B one to R one. This is a recorded plat you have in your application packet. The proposed concept plan with the three, showing the three lots. Architectural images submitted with the application. Staff recommends denial as it's not in compliance with the North High Shores Comprehensive Plan. However, should the mayor and council choose to approve the rezoning to R one, we recommend our three standard conditions. Thank you.
All right, on this one, I have a, that. Barry, I can't make out the last. Oh, Barry Lord, sorry.
Yes, my name's Barry Lord. Reside at four thirty-seven Sand Brown Boulevard in Comers. And I'm here representing Mr. Chambers. And he would like to divide this seven point five-three-four acres into three lots. Leave the existing house on the corner and have like a two point seven acre lot and a two point four acre lot. One would be accessed off of, excuse me, Elder Mill Extension and the other off not High Shores Road. Be glad to answer any questions, gentlemen, have for us. Thank you.
I don't have anybody else signed up to speak in favor. Crowd's getting small around here, so I'll then ask if there's any opposition. I don't have anybody reaching for the mic. I'll go ahead and close the public comment because I don't think anybody's needing to say anything. And I'll bring it up here to the commissioners. I guess, and I can let you lead the questions if you want.
Right, there are some, but I believe these are, yeah, I believe it is, the comprehensive plan is rural places again. And so that is a, the R one is not allowed in that rural places.
What is the, what is the acreage for, for comprehensive?
Oh, it's the same. It's a four acre. Yeah.
I guess for my own clarification, High Shores lets us have a say on it, but they have ordinances that are slightly different than ours.
There's our, that's correct. Yes.
Any recommendation we send up, they'll still, their government make their own decision. All right. With that, I will ask if there are any other questions.
I got one other question. We got, oh, we're not able to. It's split zone. We're not able to recommend denial to the R one. But I just made one for the entire lot.
You can make that recommendation. Sure.
Kobe's going to make a motion. Does it have special language? Are you going to change the language or something?
I recommend dial. With added condition that. Yes, okay, not outside this. Can't deny it and say that everything goes to.
That's right. That's right. You would recommend approval to whatever zoning you were talking about.
He wouldn't necessarily be allowing the subdivide, would he? If, if he poses that it would.
Right. They would have to meet the minimum size requirements. That's right.
One minimum size is?
Yeah, I believe that's four. Five? Sorry, five.
Basically saying no subdivide, but let's zone everything A one. Is that?
Yes, I recommend approval to A one for our.
Rezone. A one. All right, so he's making an approval. Nothing to do with the subdivide, but making approval, chase the A one, that a second?
Yes.
Okay, and wants to second that motion. And now I can, there any other comments need to be made on that? All right, then I will ask for raising right hand if you would like to approve the rezon of the whole parcel to one zone A one. But not the subdivide, please raise your right hand. And those that would vote against this motion. That is approved and we'll pass that on to North High Shoals for their consideration. That brings us to two thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Your next case is special use P twenty-five zero-two-three-three Briarwood Baptist Church, applicant and owner. This is parcel B zero-five zero-one-eight, currently zoned AG in the community village character area. And the applicant has requested to modify previous conditions of special use approval six-nine-eight-three. The requested change is to modify the condition number seven to not apply to Robin Hood roadside, to the Robin Hood roadside of the property. This is a recorded plat in your application packet, the concept plan. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Number two, condition number seven is special use permit. Six-nine-eight-three is amended for existing parking lots as follows. The developer shall install vehicle use area screening to bring the existing parking lot into compliance with the UDC Article Eight along the right of way of Robin Hood Road with evergreen shrubs as required. The existing trees along Robin Hood Road will meet the requirement for the landscape strip. The shrubs may be installed at the back of the existing curb within the right of way as needed. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Campbell, you signed up. You're representing?
That's correct. Again, Mark Campbell, Carter Engineering, ten-ten Commerce Drive, Bogart. Tonight's just an example of kind of cleaning up some ambiguity from a condition from two thousand sixteen. So that, that's a lesson in making sure we're all on the same page when you see conditions. That's why this condition is very specific, thanks to the help of staff to try to make sure that, that everybody's on the same page. So Briarwood Baptist Church is still Briarwood Baptist Church and then no, no changing in the use or anything there. But it's really cleaning up a condition from previous development from back in two thousand sixteen. So again, Mr. Joe Dunigan is here as a representative of Briarwood Baptist Church. He has let me know he does not plan to speak unless y'all have specific questions about the operations of the church. But I wanted to let you know that he is here and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. And as he says, there's nobody else signed up and I don't have anybody signed up for opposition. I will ask if there's anybody. But if you're watching on TV, there's no one left. So I will go ahead and close the public comment section and bring it up here to the commissioners. Do you have any questions about this proposal? And if not, what motion would you recommend? They've made a motion to approve. Who was that saying? Kobe?
That was with staff recommendations, correct?
Yes. With recommendations. Yeah, conditions. So please raise your right hand if you also would like to approve with the staff's. And with that, we have a motion or need a motion to adjourn, otherwise we sit here all night. James, heard. Who wants a second? So please stand up and show your vote in favor.